Now.
Okay. So I'm going to start the meeting. The meeting is 10:03. Because this is a Zoom meeting, I'm going to ask everybody to identify themselves. I'll start with myself, Ken Pacheco, Chair of the Dyken Board of Selectmen. Mike?
I am Mike Mullin, the Town Administrator.
Jocelyn?
Jocelyn Chiaris, Library Director.
Karen?
Erin Brady, Executive Assistant.
Mark Pacheco.
Mark Pacheco, Town Clerk.
And Lisa?
Lisa Caledonia, Conservation Agent.
Carrie?
Carrie Easterday, Planning Board and Zoning Board.
Tim Rhines in the back there.
Tim Rhines, Sheriff's Land Board.
Chief McGee?
You want me to turn mine down?
Yeah.
And Tom? Tom?
Tom Ferry, Dana Howie Department.
Stacy?
Stacy Ferry, Animal Control Officer.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Gale, ADA Coordinator.
And Alice?
Alice Suzie, Director Counsel on Aging.
Thank everybody for identifying themselves. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. So welcome, everybody, to our July Department Head Meeting. I suspect some people may be on vacation, so not everybody is able to attend. One of the things I would like to discuss, and it's been put on the agenda, is returning to an in-person meeting for the Department Head Meetings. What does the Department Heads feel about? What do you feel about that? Do you want to meet in person?
But do you want me to turn it up? Okay, because I can't hear.
What do people want? Do they want to be in person, or do they want to continue with a Zoom meeting? Or a hybrid meeting?
I like in-person. It's good to see everyone face-to-face, but I think hybrid is better because then the public can listen in on our meetings as well.
And anybody else?
This is Carrie.
So I have mixed with my, both my boards. My Planning Board, I do have one or two that are iffy about doing in-person, so they would like to do the hybrid because they are compromised. So we do have Forest Hills coming up at the end of the month, so, and we're doing that at Dyton Middle School, but we're going to do hybrid, and I'm working with the school to try and hopefully, knock on wood, set it up so that we can do a hybrid with the computer with Zoom. And then zoning board, last month, we had in-person downstairs in the lower-level Town Hall, but one of the members was not available. And the month before that, there was discussion because they were doing the contemplation of doing the in-person, and there was one or two members who was a little weary going in-person, so they didn't feel comfortable, and that person was not available at last month's meeting. So they weren't comfortable having, doing a determination of that meeting without that person available. So the consensus was, they were going to wait until they had the full board to have the discussion. But they also felt that, you know, if they were going to have a public hearing, they would do in-person, but if it was going to be like a regular meeting that didn't have a whole lot of stuff on, they would do like a Zoom meeting. That's what they were leaning to on that type of thing, or even maybe a hybrid meeting as well. They did like the, both, I got the consensus from both boards that they liked the Zoom meetings because you get more public involved. But then again, they like the in-person because it's more personable. I think they're kind of torn.
Yep. Thank you, Carrie. I think Jonathan, I think you wanted to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe, I think if your question was only related to these meetings, to the Department Head Meetings once a month. For me, it's certainly for obvious reasons, since I'm not one of those people who want to drive in Dyton and would be a danger on the road. I obviously would love to do the hybrid version because it's easier for me, but if the consensus is that it be in-person, then I will certainly make that work.
Anybody? Jocelyn?
Today's an example of a day that I'm the only one here at the library, so hybrid would be preferable for me. Probably for the time being.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this?
So yeah, I actually, in my opinion, not that it's ever worth anything, but I, I think, I mean, I think the flow that we've established here with our virtual Zoom meetings for the Department Head Meetings, all of us, all of us as Department Heads, we are like a regularly torn in 100 different directions, so to, I think, have the flexibility with Zoom, oh, you know, like I think works really well for these type of meetings for the committee heads as well. Oh, you know, if they're working as well, they can log on from work. And they could be viewed as having more flexibility to participate as well. That's just my thought, and also so the fire chief can participate in this car.
Anybody else which to add to this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is just a comment. I believe that if the governor has given the cities and towns the capabilities of doing either-or, I think it should be up to, of course, boards and commissions and not up to the Board of Selectmen for them to make that decision. I know it should go through you, but again, you know, the state legislature has approved this guidance to go further to keep residents in, of course, our elected, you know, cities and town officials safe. So that's just, just a comment, that's all.
Yeah, so I was referencing just the Department Head Meetings. I'm not going to dictate to any board whether or not they should have a hybrid meeting, a Zoom meeting, or just say in-person meeting. I know that the Board of Selectmen have asked, are doing a hybrid meeting. We're meeting in-person, my colleagues, as well as Mike Mullin and Karen, but it's also a hybrid meeting so that people can via Zoom. So I tend to think that that's what we're leaning towards, is maybe a hybrid meeting. I would prefer to meet in-person. However, I understand that some people may not be able to, and I think Town Administrator Mike Mullin brought out a valid point that all the people here are Department Heads, and they have more things going on than maybe perhaps I have going on. So I would prefer to meeting persons. Several of us, I'm sure, will meet in-person, but the rest meet via Zoom, if that's okay with everybody.
My apologies, I missed that part. I thought you were just talking in general, so my apologies.
That's okay. That's all right. Maybe I didn't make it clear enough, I'm sorry.
So yeah, Ken, so it'll be like in-person but with a hybrid, so people who are actually not able to attend in-person can do the Zoom.
That's what I think seems to be the consensus here. So that's, that's what we'll do for the, that's what we'll do for the August meeting.
Sounds good.
I think, Mike, you put the next agenda item on, review closing year-end procedures and deadlines?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. So like, we are in the process, obviously, the new fiscal year, FY22 just began, and we're also working to close out, like, at this point, FY21. We are, as everybody knows, we do have a transition in the position of the Town Accountant, but we are, like, we, a prior Town Accountant, he has agreed to help us when he's available to close out back to the month of June, so we can have all that closed, and then we are going to have a quote, actually, which we're going to present to the FinCom and to the Board of Selectmen next week, like, for interim, for interim consulting services, so we can actually officially close out FY21, and then actually, and then actually finalize and submit to DOL our free cash as well. So, so that being said, the Board of Selectmen, after the last meeting, they approved, close to, I want to say, 10 transfer requests from individual departments. We have as a town until the 15th of this month to have those transfer requests finalized. So the FinCom is meeting, actually, next Tuesday evening. I've been in touch with Peter Roach, and I believe that meeting is going to actually be held at, I'm at 7 o'clock next Tuesday evening. And then if there's any last-minute transfer items that need to come before the Board of Selectmen, those can be done on the 14th in advance of the 15th deadline as well. So, like, I understand everyone's been watching, like, how they were closing out in terms of the, in terms of the individual and respective departments. Like, and I, and I believe actually going through the general ledges and the year-to-date spending, I believe we've worked with, we've worked with everybody to identify any transfers that have been needed. But if there are, if there are, yeah, excuse me, if there are any departments who have just realized that they do need to transfer based on, oh, you know, how they're spending any unforeseen bills that have occurred these last few weeks, if you can let me know as soon as possible, because what we would need to do now is front-load that transfer request with the FinCom and then bring it to the Board of Selectmen for Wednesday evening, so we can meet the deadline. So I just want to make that, all I can ask for, everybody's help in making that, like, a huge priority to make sure that we enter into FY20, 2022, and we don't have any prior, any prior year bills that we have to go forward to the special town meeting with at this point. The other thing which we are working on as well, like relating to how we closed out the end of the year, and how we're moving into FY20, FY22 is, as a Board of Selectmen this Saturday, I was having a retreat, you know, to discuss goal-setting, like, in town and Board of Selectmen priorities, and at that meeting, which will have an update for everyone at the Board of Selectmen meeting also on next Wednesday night, like, is going to, like, is going to be a discussion on the FY22 discretionary spending. So by the end of the next week, we will have word and information out to all departments about in what way the direction will be going. Oh, you know, and in terms of discretionary spending requests, like, for FY22, so everyone can be on the same page. So that information should be forthcoming at this point by the end of, and then next week, just so that going in, actually going into FY22, we can all be on the same page. So that is all I have for the fiscal year-end and start information, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions.
Are there any questions? Mike, do you have anything else you want to add?
Yes, like, I do have, actually, I actually, two quick items. Number one, I just want to bring to everyone's attention, and to especially thank Brett, and to thank Tom Ferry and Jonathan Gale out of town. At the end of last week, we learned that we were awarded a grant from the Mass Department of Transportation in the amount of $118,000 through the Shared Streets Program, and to work on accessibility issues around the area, actually roadway accessibility issues in the area of the library, like, in the middle street area, I believe, on a number of areas in South, I'm in South Dyton, up by the Housing, the Housing Authority, Lincoln Ave, and also by Bristol Aggie as well. So we'll be getting underway with that grant, but, you know, for many months, that whole project was a labor of love, and I came at the tail end of it, but I really want to thank Tom, Brett, and Jonathan again for that, and all their work on that. And finally, we do have the new boxes, the drop boxes, if you will, and back to Town Hall for the Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office as well. Like, in the, so in the, in the applicable departments and the stakeholders who have been involved in that, if you can all anticipate an email from me, probably before the end of the week, I want to bring, so I, so I want to bring, so I want to bring everyone together to kick off the use of those boxes, like, and to identify any signage, any type of public educational messaging on Facebook and our website that we, oh, you know, like are able to use, to put those boxes in operation. So I haven't forgot about that, and, I mean, as I mentioned, like, expect an email from me by the end of this week so we can get moving on that. So, and that is all I have, all I have at this point, we are working on the library modular, like, we're getting quotes, like, actually for that as we speak, and I've been in touch with Jocelyn and Jim Edgar as well, you know, and we're getting quotes. We may, like, have to, you know, have to do some site visits, you know, to go to, actually, particular vendors in the next week, just, oh, just to see the modulars that we're being quoted for, so we know what we're getting. So, so more to come on that, but I just wanted to bring everyone up to date on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike, and I'm sure we all appreciate the hard work that Brett, Jonathan, Tom Ferry, and yourself has worked on that grant, and we all appreciate it, and it's something that is well-needed in this town. So I'm going to ask each Department Head if they give me an update on their particular department. You probably don't have the same order that I have on my Zoom, but I'm going to go on my order, so the first person would be Mark Pacheco.
Hello. Hi. So, July 1st, Pat Gales and Martha Santos looked at some historical books that are in the Town Clerk's possession. I just wanted a recommendation on next steps for their preservation. I've gotten a quote on preserving them, so we had a very good conversation, and I'm going to get some more quotes and reach out to Secretary of the Commonwealth. They have some archival programs, and so that was, that was a lot of fun. That's the fun part of the job. Can't wait to progress on that. The week of June 16th, we sent out dog licensing reminders to folks who either licensed their dogs in the past or they got a rabies certificate from a vet. It was a very good mailing. We got 128 dog licenses so far. So that's 128 more dogs in town who are licensed. I'm very proud of that. At some point, anyone who hasn't responded, we will turn that list over to Stacy Ferry. She's going to help us with that. And lastly, I'm having LHS and ESNS are coming down in the coming weeks to show us new voting equipment. We're anticipating going possibly to three precincts, and our voting equipment is outdated. They don't even make parts for it anymore, so preparing for the future.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Good morning. So, summertime, so there's not much to report with the exception of, as I said earlier, Forest Hills, we have a public hearing follow-up for July 21st at the Dyton Middle School at 6:00 PM, so that will be in-person. As anticipated, it's going to be a large turnout with the public input, so that's why we're at the middle school. I am anticipating on going over to the middle school on Thursday to try to do a test run on hardwire for the Zoom because their wireless isn't that great over there. So I'm working with their IT, and hopefully we can finagle something. Keep your fingers crossed, please. And that's about it. We had, for zoning, we, zoning board, there was a public hearing that was continued for a electronic sign for Bristol Aggie that's been continued for a decision for next month. And that's about it. It's been pretty quiet, knock on wood.
Thank you, Carrie. Tim Rhines?
Chairman Rhines from the Planning Board would like to elaborate on something.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is just a comment for our Town Clerk, Mr. Pacheco. I do not serve on the CPC any longer, but I just want everyone to know that there are, there is funding that is out there in preservationists who can come in to, you know, take care of our 300-year-old documents. I ran this by Suma Deres many years ago. The funding is available, and you have to see and look just to get your bits, of course, for different preservationists, but I just want to put that out there, so that way I may be able to relieve some of that burden of, you know, monies being spent through the town itself.
Thank you. I'm preparing to go to them as well. I appreciate it. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gulat, do you have anything to about stormwater or whatever, tax assessment?
At the next Stormwater Committee meeting, we will be continuing the hearing, and it's for the two solar farms that are located behind the Arujos farm greenhouses and that. There's still a lot of work to be done relative to, I don't want to say drainage, but related to the road, the access road that will be going up there, and how wide it will be, and also concerns, we've discussed a number of times with public safety about actually accessing the solar farm property because you have to go, you enter the property at the main driveway, and as we all know, there's two parking lots, one on either side. So we've been working out kinks on that with the proponents and with public safety. The Stormwater Committee is continuing to work with Mr. Mullin relative to peaceful resolution of the Dora Estate situation on Winthrop Street. That's where there's some condos being built in Tonton. However, there, that construction impacts Butters and Dyton. So I think we've made good progress on that. There's a meeting coming up this month that I plan to attend along with those who also have been regularly attending. And I know Mr. Mullins had some correspondence with appropriate people, so that's, that's, I expect that to be brought to a successful resolution. The other thing is, there's going to be a hearing the same night with the Tonconcom and Forest Hills, and I'm planning to stay for that because although they're going to be talking about work in Tonton, that's going to impact the town of Dyton. And the topic deals with, I'll call it, the stormwater issue in Tonton, so I'd be interested to see how, how that discussion goes. From the Board of Assessors, congratulations. By now, you've probably all received your tax bills, and you're so happy. You got your first quarterly. And Mark is happy because, excuse me, not Mark, Mary's happy because that means pretty soon money's coming in again. So the Board of Assessors met on June 30th, and we signed all the motor vehicle abatements. We signed the warrant and commitments for FY22 preliminary real estate tax bills. We reviewed exemptions for reimbursements, improvements. The other thing that I brought up under public input that we're pursuing, excuse me, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, probably around 2015, when I came back, I encountered a problem with excise tax refunds because, excuse me, I had leased a vehicle. Well, if you turn a vehicle in that you lease before the calendar year ends, which is what your excise tax is based on, normally, if you, if you just trade that car in or sell it, you apply for a rebate from the Board of Assessors. If it's a leased vehicle, although you have had to pay that tax through the leasing company, the refund goes to the leasing company. And let me tell you, they are in no rapid response mode to give you back that money that you paid. It took me over six months and many phone calls and a few letters before I finally got the rebate on that car. Excise tax. So I got in touch with Pat Hadad at the time and told her about what I consider to be a royal rip-off, because when you think about the thousands and thousands of vehicles that get leased, and just in Massachusetts, and the fact that leasing companies were not refunding, I'll call it the overpayment of an excise tax, Rep Hadad filed legislation to amend leasing contracts that would require leasing companies to refund any overpayment of excise taxes by lessees. It was moving its way through the legislature. I haven't heard anything recently. So I talked to Mrs. Borogod about this, and as a result, I've sent an email to Rep Hadad and asked her, what is the status of the legislation? I think from a consumer protection standpoint alone, something has got to be done, because we're probably talking hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax money that people in this state have paid, that they may not know they're eligible to get the money back, and as I said, leasing companies aren't racing to refund the money. So anyhow, when I know for sure, or I get an update from Pat, where is, I know sometimes these things, it had been referred to committee, I think it went to Ways and Means. I don't know what happened to it after that. I know sometimes if proposed legislation's not acted on during the current year, it, like, dies, so it has to be refiled. So I did ask Rep Hadad for an update, and if in fact it needs to be refiled, I asked that it be refiled again, because again, this, I feel this is very important consumer protection legislation that anybody can benefit from. And so when I hear something down the road, I'll let you know, but if you know anyone who leases or has leased a vehicle, and they turned it in before the end of the calendar year, whether they got another vehicle or whether they just said, I'm not going to lease anymore, they need to get in touch with the leasing company. If the leasing company has not refunded the amount of overpayment of excise tax, because I see these, now that I'm an assessor, I see these all the time, and I'm thinking, well, they're quick in asking for their, the money back, but they're not speedy in refunding it to lessees. So that's where we are with that. So again, I'll let you know what happens with that.
Nancy, this is Jonathan, and I have been bit by that same bug, actually. And it's taken me many, many, many months to, again, recover what I shouldn't have to fight to recover. So if there's legislation being filed again, or if there's ever, if you hear hearings being held up at the State House, or there's a need to ever walk the halls and knock on the doors and you're going, please let me know. I'd be happy to join you and lend my voice to it. I think it makes a big difference.
Okay, and when I, when I hear back from Pat, as again, I will, I will let everybody know, but, you know, it, mine was over six months, and it was just one aggravation after another. Nobody told me, we're not going to do it, but they were all trained in stalling, so hopefully you'd never call back. Big mistake. So anyhow, again, thank you, Jonathan, and I'll let everybody know where this is going, what's happening, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gulat. Jocelyn, anything to report on the library?
Hi. Yeah, we have a lot going on. Lori has started her outreach in the parks. So she's at the Lane Field this morning till 1:00, heat permitting. And we'll see how that goes. Hopefully, it'll be Hopefully it'll be great all summer long. Starting next week on Wednesdays, we're doing a Zoom meet the zookeeper program with different animals in conjunction with Buttonwood Park. And those are about 20 minute sessions. So we'll be meeting a tortoise, an elephant, the red panda, a sloth, the fennec fox. And that's funded with our Cares Grant. We have a concert with Somerset Library and some of our neighboring libraries on July 26th outside Somerset Library. And it's Cajun Zydeco Band. So we're looking forward to that. And we have our flying dogs. Also on that day behind Town Hall. So they are dogs who run around with frisbees. And I can't wait for that one. So our summer reading program is Tales and Tales. So that's like up my alley and we got a lot of things going on.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Elisa, do you have anything regarding the conservation?
Yeah, of course. Let's see, can you just turn that down for a minute? Okay, at present we have three major subdivisions before us. So we have Hunter's Hill, Strawberry Fields and Forest Estates. Hunter's Hill, we've requested that they refile, sorry, reflag the wetlands. And we recently just hired an outside consultant to review that project. The outside consultant will be reviewing it for wetlands and stormwater compliance. That is niche engineering and ecosystems services. And then for Strawberry Fields, we're still reviewing everything. They've got a long way to go. We have Beta Group reviewing that for stormwater and wetlands compliance. And Forest Hills, we've requested and received money from the applicant so that we can also do some peer review. We haven't picked anyone yet, so we're in the process of doing that. Then we have a number of other ongoing projects that we're, you know, following up to make sure they're in compliance. One of them's Brook Street Solar. I've been going to the site with our stormwater agent, Todd Pilling, and taking a look at the erosion controls, making sure that, you know, the wetlands are protected out there. And we have some other things going on, some violations and some, some folks that are fixing things we've asked to be fixed. It's just an ongoing kind of thing. You know, the surveyors and engineers are knee deep right now and super busy, you know, trying to get everything accomplished. So we're working with these applicants and these homeowners to make sure that, you know, they're at least showing that they're, you know, moving in the right direction. We've got a couple that don't seem to be very responsive, but in the dozen or so, you know, that's not a bad number. So hesitant to start finding the couple that are in compliance and aren't in cooperative just because, you know, I feel like that might drag things out even more if they can't afford to hire a wetland scientist, then how are they going to be able to afford to pay the fines? So yeah, our next meeting is July 15th. We'll be meeting in the upper level of the Old Town Hall in person. My commission has decided to not do Zoom meetings because some of them are hearing impaired and need to be able to read lips. And that's about it.
Thank you, Lisa. Chief McGee? Chief, are you available?
Yeah, kind of. I'm driving, but I'll open the shot.
Be careful.
Fire Department's moving along. We have the firecracker thing this weekend, doing hose testing, Larry allowed a testing this week and that's, that's about it. Been busy.
Thank you, Chief. Tom Ferry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I have a few things.
You got a headset there. Mr. Professional.
So the guardrail upgrades should be next week on Middle Street and Center Street, finally. We have a concern about any in-town painting with the contractor. Any questions that come into anyone, just refer them to me, please. There's a possibility we will not have any center lines painted in town this year. I need to see Mike on that. But I just refer the phone calls or inquiries to myself at this time. We do have, I think we're putting Karen into a little dilemma with the speed sign problem on William Street. Maybe Mike can spearhead this and resolve this. I believe we got to get a response to this resident. And is there any movement on the Capitol Outlay? Is there any way to reach out to them yet so we can stop planning? I have that question also.
I believe you're talking about the committee, the Capitol Outlay Committee?
Yes, I, I haven't heard anything on how to input what we have yet.
Yeah, I believe they're meeting in August. I don't think I have the, I was given the date, but I don't think I have the date in my calendar. I'm not sure if Mike is available. Capitol Outlay is meeting on August 19th at 3:00. I, in the past, it's been Zoom. I'm going to assume it's Zoom again, but they're meeting at 3:00. So if you have any questions, I would probably speak to Mike Mullin. He's on that committee also. So perhaps you can speak to him and you can have some input and maybe come to that meeting.
As far as the grant that Mike referred to and all my other sidewalk concerns and initially any type of paving, everything looks like late fall. That's how things are falling in because of the pandemic, material needs and scheduling. Scheduling is the biggest problem right now. I anticipated on doing that, that work that the grant, we got the grant for. I already tried to get on the schedule and at that time we were already looking at October, November, and that was not nailed in yet. So we do have a lot of repairs to do in-house anyways throughout the summer. So that kind of works out better for ourselves. But it looks like any type of paving, sidewalk work and stuff is late fall.
Like I do have a question about that grant. I heard something about that. It's going to be also where Lincoln Village is. So are we going to have a curb cut on the sidewalk across the street then and a crosswalk so that the public from, or the people from Lincoln Village can cross at that point? And I know I've had some concerns, I've heard some concerns about that. Is that part of the plan?
Yes.
Good, good to know. Anything else, Tom?
Someone has a question?
Yeah, Mrs. Gulat.
But Tom, does any of the work that you planned have anything to do with easements or anything we need to plan ahead for?
Not at this time. I'm going to take a closer look at that within the next week. That money that we, in the annual meeting, we reallocated, I am still going to need that. And I believe the wording will still be available, the funds would still be available. But for me to pull off what I need to pull off in some of the areas, I need that money also.
Okay. Just let me know if you need my help, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you both, Mrs. Gulat and Tom. Jonathan, do you have anything?
Well, first I just want to, again, thank Tom and Brett and Mike for all the work that we all did to get that grant approved. I think that that's great. So thank you guys for your input and your resources on that. I know it was several months in the making, so I'm glad that we got that done. I'm just going to be looking at putting potentially some rail embossing on the, the two new boxes that Mike referred to earlier down at the lower level of Town Hall so that visually impaired residents who want to drop anything off will know what each box says on that basis. So I'm going to be looking into getting the quotes on that, looking at the, I don't know, I've said this before, but there were delays. The ramp application for Old Town Hall stage should be reviewed next week. I believe it's going to be next Thursday or Friday at their meeting. So hopefully we'll get a final answer to that very shortly and then we can get, get going on that and get that done. We're going to be involved in the event this Saturday. No, I'm not going to be dunked like the selectman. Thank you very much for doing that. But we are going to have a table for the COD and we are going to have information about who we are, what we do. We're going to have some hands-on types of things for people to try using wheelchairs and mobility with cane and white cane and so forth as well. So we want to keep it, you know, very simple, but let people in the community see what disability is all about. We're looking at some other grant work for Parks and Rec and for the community garden, as I've said. And there are other things we've been asked to look at in town and get involved in other projects as well. So onward and forward, we just, we just keep on keeping on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. So I reluctantly, reluctantly agreed to be part of that dunking thing for Saturday. I, I am confident that there's going to be many people willing to dunk me in the tank. To say I'm looking forward to it is not correct. I do hope that Chief McGee will have an ambulance there for me. But anyway, we're all looking forward to it. I believe it's, it's going to be a great event Saturday and looking forward to seeing a lot of residents in town come to that event. Last but not least, Alice Souza, Ms. Souza.
Well, we seem to be doing okay, but we're still waiting for the Board of Health and all the committees to see if it's okay if we can open primetime. We will be moving as soon as we can back to Lincoln Village, Bella and I. We plan on doing that so that we can at least have the space here at primetime to put the tables up and set everything up so that we can get our clients back. Everything's going well. We're still waiting for the next meeting so that we can find out what's happening. And we've gone over our paperwork and sent it out to our board and to the committee. And I think that that next meeting we go to, we should be able to get everything done and finished and amen. Thank you.
Yeah, nobody's giving you a timetable or anything for primetime?
No, we haven't got a timeframe from the committee yet.
Sure. Well, I'm looking forward to it opening up and I'm sure you are too. Any other questions or any other concerns that anybody wishes to bring up before we adjourn this meeting? Mr. Rhines?
Mr. Chairman, this is just a question in regards to the Cannabis Advisory Board. And when we do plan to have a next meeting, there's been discussion, but nothing set in concrete yet.
Yeah, I'm not on that, maybe Mike can, I know that one member has resigned from that task force. But Mike, do you have any idea when they're going to meet, meet again?
Yeah, just a few things if I can follow up. Number one, on the reopening of primetime. So in the last meeting of the reopening task force, we did set, I'm actually a follow-up meeting date of actually, hold on a second. I believe the, I believe the 14th, either the 14th or the 21st.
July 21st.
So yeah, like the 21st, so things, oh, you know, oh, yeah, oh, so things have been progressing. We do not, so we do not, not have a plan. I just want to make, I just want to clarify that. We, like we met the end of last month, we, oh, again, oh, again, we worked out a lot of the details and the plans to move the Council on Aging actually back to the Housing Authority. Like with the expectation that, that we would come back on the 21st and to talk about on a potential primetime reopening, the first part of August. So like, and that is what we will be discussing on the 21st. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Then on, then on the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board, I believe, sorry, like we did settle on, like, like actually Mr. Rhines and I'm meeting, I'm on, on Tuesday, the 13th at 6:00 PM.
I have that. Thank you very much.
Yep. So yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Gale. I just want to give a little, a comment very quickly. Last week, Mary Groh had a public meeting that they, that they held with regard to, you know, what they're, what they're doing. And I just have to say, they were very proactive, reaching out to me ahead of time to see what they needed to do to make sure that their public meeting was as accessible as possible. So I have to give them a little, you know, just a shout out for that. In fact, it was, it was wonderful that they did that. I did not contact them. They contacted me through the town.
Yeah, I, Jonathan, that's good to know. I saw those emails. Unfortunately, there was only five people attending that meeting and two of them were from Marigold. So, and it was a 15 minute meeting.
I think, I think that was the other dilemma with that is I don't think it was well advertised and well posted. That's a separate issue. But in terms of at least being proactive, they were proactive and as you saw the emails back and forth, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. Mrs. Gulat, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, Stormwater Committee will have, excuse me, a informational table at the Firecracker event. And we have some new, I'll call them giveaways as part of our educational program. Obviously last year we weren't able to have any events at all. So this will be our first attempt to, again, get information out to the general public about the importance of stormwater management and what people can do on their own properties to help us. So I hope we have a good turnout and I hope the weather's good.
I hope so too. It looks like we're going to, Elsa is going to hit us on Friday and not Saturday. So that's, that's good to hear. And it's going to rain late Saturday from what I can see so far anyway. So hopefully it works out. We have a few commissions that I'm involved in. The Commission on Disability will be present. The Historical Commission will be present. The Historical Society, which is not a town, it's a nonprofit in town, but not a town, Commission will be there. The Board of Selectmen will be there and these other groups that are also going to be there. So hopefully we get the public to turn out and hopefully we get some new volunteers for the different committees and commissions that we have in town. Is there anything else that anybody has to add to this meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I did, so I just wanted to quickly, that I hope, so that I hope Elsa lets it go. Get the pun?
I got it, I got it.
Okay, Jonathan, you're going to have to explain that to me then after.
I just wanted to ask after this meeting if perhaps Mr. Ferry and Alice also, if you, if the both of you could reach out to me just for a minute with a short phone call. I have a quick question about a potential borrow for this coming Saturday for the Firecracker event. So if either of you could reach out to me after, after we're done, or I can reach out to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gale, I'm going to meet with you shortly. So after this meeting, I will meet with you also.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any, anything else?
Hey, Mr. Ferry, are you still there?
I am.
All right. So regarding the dunk tank and everything that's going to happen on Saturday, are we prepared to deal with a large amount of water runoff?
I was, I was advised somebody slipped me cannot swim, so I'm going to not fill it as much anyways. So I'm going to have very little water in it to help with that.
So if you get dunked, are you going to, are you going to be able to even get up or you're just going to end on the ground?
Just so everybody knows, I'm the person that doesn't know how to swim. I made a comment to Mr. Ferry about that yesterday and he said who lowered the waters maybe like a half a foot or a foot, which I don't think is, is a good idea. But he wants to conserve on water, I guess.
Yes.
Got to control runoff.
Yes, well, stormwater has to be involved, I guess. Anything else? If not, I will join the meeting and I hope to see everybody Saturday behind Town Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Taking your time.